Justin, I do not know if you can hear me, but you are muted.
Thank you. I'm sorry. For the public record, I make a motion to be approved. The minutes for the September 21 meeting, the one that I walked in late.
I'll second that.
So the motion by Kent, second by Chris to approve the minutes of September 21. All those in favor? And the October 19th will wait till.
I'll bring you your next meeting. That's one of them.
And we're on to to consider the responses to the solar quest for proposal.
So John is here from Revision Energy and. He can, so however you want to handle it, he's on Zoom. Good evening. It's solar panels behind him. That's the one.
How'd you guess? Yeah, good evening. I know that Justin had reached out to me and said you had a number of questions, so glad to. Field any questions you have specifically to the proposal.
And a couple of questions, John. Hi, John. I'm Kent Ackley. One question related to. The escalator that's included in your proposal and can you fill us in like starting from the. Basics of exactly what the escalator does and how that works.
Yes, so the escalator is a. A pretty standard escalator in terms of we used to use 3% industry wide. Now we typically use 2%. And what happens is every year the PPA rate will rise 2% for each year for the 20 year life of the. Of the project. As long as you're in the PPA, if you buy the system out, then obviously the escalator will go away. Probably 80 or 90% of systems are bought out after year five. Some people will buy out at around 10. And what it does is if if typical utility rates rise two and a half or 3%, then your percentage of savings is just raising each and every year. Right now, the. NEB credit for your for the town would be. Eighteen and a half, 18.89 cents at the for the MSG accounts. And a little over 19 for the. SGS account, so I don't have the exact blend of that. So you're definitely 18.89 cents would be your credit. So you're getting a credit on your bill based on 18.89 cents. And you're paying 13 and a half cents that first year. So it gives you an idea that you've got. That's I think I calculated it early was about a. 27 or 28% savings in the first year. And obviously, the rate for the PPA would be growing at 2.5%. So if the. Even if the rate stayed at 18.89 cents, you'd have a savings going on like I say easily that five, six, seven, eight years. And if rates go as expected and CMP has certainly asked for a significant rate increase and. I think everybody's hearing in the news that energy prices are going to rise again significantly. So that by the time we landed on this this product project, we probably look and it might be looking at a. Any B credit rate that's more in the value of, you know, over 20 cents. But I think even at 18% 18.9 cents, you're looking at a, like I said. A 27 or 28% credit. Savings. And the way that actually works is all the power sold back to the grid. You get a credit based on the production times that 18.89 cents placed on your bills. And you pay the investor the 13 and a half cents for the in that year one and that savings is the difference between that rate and the value of the credit. Did that answer the question, Ken?
Yeah, pretty close. I've got some follow up questions. So just for our edification, can you give us an idea of what kind of increase as a. Percentage that CMP is requested of the Public Utilities Commission?
I think it's over 20%. I don't know where the last one I heard was over 20%. I don't know where it's going to fall. I do know that supply, so the the NEB rate is based on a. 100% of supply and then 75% of T and D. So it the value of the credit tracks with the rate requests of CMP, actually the approval. And then the PUC does a calculation that does that. So if they were to get a hefty increase, then that rate would go up. And again, based on the whole energy market right now, we would think that the rates would be rising or very high for at least the next three to five years.
So so what I'm hearing you say is you anticipate. Significant inflationary pressure. In both the supply. And the transmission and distribution portions. Of of the the bill. And. What is in your proposal in terms of an escalator for the town is that we would be locked into. A 2.8% increase each year.
I need to pull that up. I thought it was a 2% escalator, but I apologize.
You might be right. You might be right. I might stand corrected.
I use. Yeah, I think we have a 2% escalator built into the project.
Okay.
But even at 2.8%, you would. With rates expected to rise the way they are, you would certainly be, you know, very, very healthy savings. And obviously, you know, when you buy the system out, it even gets that much better.
Sure, because when we when we own it, then we're getting a one for one. We're getting a kilowatt hour by kilowatt hour, whatever the standard offer is.
But yeah, whatever the PUC credit, which again is is the. The math that I explained before, you would obviously you wouldn't be paying the PTA. You just get the whole credit based on there, obviously. Paying for the system, whether you bonded or wherever you financed that or whatever you did. I know in. The case of a couple of towns I work with, what they did is they set aside. Savings over a period of time, and that's how they funded the. Purchase.
Buyout, right? And after the buyout, then whatever the system produces is what it is. And the town and whatever the price of electricity is what it is. Because the town's producing its own electricity and it doesn't. It doesn't matter if there's a an increase in the standard offer.
That's right. The only the only difference is if. Right, when you would be, you wouldn't be paying the PPA, so you'd get 100% or as you say, one to one savings that you get 100% of it. As standard offer would rise, that credit would rise. Or fall if it fell, but you know, certainly you would not be paying the PPA. So 100% of that value would be given to the town. Now, I designated the system to generate about a. Forty one thousand forty forty thousand five hundred cred dollars in credits. That needs to be shored up to what your exact expenses or projected expenses because we don't want to overproduce. Because there's not a great deal of value in overproducing.
Sure, we would forfeit any kind of overproduction.
Yeah.
And there's no, there's.
Or get wholesale for it, which would be you'd be paying more for it than it's worth.
Okay, and and there's no banking involved with this program. You're not allowed to like a residential program that net energy program would. Allow for one year banking. Is there any banking in this program?
So the good thing is the credits carryover. And from month to month to month. So at the end of the year, we want it to be equal to your bill. So you get a 12 month carryover. There is a 12 month expiration on it. But at the end of the year, they're the CMP and most utilities. Shore everything up in in April.
All right, so it's like a April 1 to 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 March 31 type of annual cycle?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and. And I just want to make sure that I understand properly these credits in this program that we would be participating. In your with you and your proposal. Cover both supply and the transmission and distribution portion of the bill. So we we are able to offset both expenses.
That's correct. Uniquely or. Most advantageously in Maine, when they made the LD 1711, you could have now offset 100% of your bill, not just your kilowatt hour.
And can you give us an idea of what size of. System you would be recommending if we were going to replace the. What we think is approximately forty one thousand five hundred dollars worth of expenses?
Yes, absolutely. Bear with me one second. I just got to get to another screen. I can give you the exact stats on it. It's a. 184 KW, 184.32 KW that would produce. 214,000 kilowatt hours a year. And that's really the driving factor. It's the the production times those credit rates. That's where we we target what kind of production you want. So if you said, look at the bills early, look like the 30,000 or whatever, we would adjust the size down to to fit that. If you were to tell me. Two years from now, John, you know, this is going to take about a year to get this system installed at this point. If you were to tell me, you know, we're going to reopen the former school, we're going to add heat pumps, we're going to our electrical profiles changing. Then you may want to do slightly larger. And for the future, and maybe you forego a little bit in the beginning, but that those were decisions would be totally up to you.
Good. And for a. 184 kilowatt system that you've described. We've, I know you did some analysis on a couple of different potential locations. One location that the transfer station is one that you folks have looked at before. In fact, one that we got. Voters to approve at our last town meeting. Can you give us an idea of what sort of footprint that this might be and? You know, what sort of? What's it? What's it going to look like? I'll describe it neutrally. What's it going to look like?
I do you? Did you have the? In the proposal where it actually showed what where the layout is and and on the. Site?
Yes.
Yeah, so that, you know, again, these sites were chosen. I think it was Keith Frost, I think I rode around with.
Sure.
And interestingly enough, then I think the last time I presented to the board, the sand pit was brought up as a suggestion. So that's we. Looked at that after after the fact, but. You know, the critical thing is we want to be near three phase power. So that's that's a critical thing we first look for. Obviously, we want to minimize any work. So the. Site at the transfer station. To the. East of the array. I'm doing this off the top of my head. I'm thinking about looking up the driveway towards the transfer station. Think to the east of the array is wide open, the little field, but there is some trees to the left that would need to be determined how much we need to cut those back. Again, discussions were early on with Keith and I think Linda was that the town might would be open to that. If we were to look at that site, not want to do any tree work, then you're talking about we'd have to look at the actual production of the system, the impact on that. And. Again, the sand pit, it sounds like I did take a chance to look, listen to your last meeting. It sounded like there's. Not a lot of interest in working over at the sand pit. Though was the site that you guys had suggested last year.
So. My, I I heard, and maybe I saw a reference to it. In a letter that you had written to Justin, our town manager, some concern about putting panels on. Tapped land or filled land and. My understanding is that that portion of the the. Transfer station. Has not been filled that the the filled portion of the transfer station is in another. You know, area that's farther away from the road. In back. Do you? I mean, if if we can. Confirm that with someone who's got a deeper history than I do. Do you? Do you think that something the size of that field to the east of the? The entrance there, the driveway there would be enough to be able to accommodate the 184 kilowatt system that. You're proposing?
So I'm sorry, I just need to try to figure this out in my head, Kent. So if I'm coming up the driveway, I was what I think was to the to the. West side, right? You want to know? Was I to the east or the west? I'm sorry, when I did.
I'm pretty sure we said to the east on the. Yeah, to the left is you're entering the transfer station.
Yes, okay, yeah, so that, yeah, that's actually, yes, that. The rendering that we provided there is is the exact same size, the system size. So yes, we could fit it in that.
Okay, and if we could find some other space in the transfer station, I mean, some some folks are going to have concern about. Tree work. For the purpose of installing this, if we could find an equivalent amount of space on unfilled land in the transfer station. In another portion of the transfer station, for example, would that be suitable as well as long as it's within? I mean, for example, to the right of the driveway, there is the dirty wood pile. That's the name of it. Not my choice. The dirty wood pile sits to the right, and that also is not on filled land is. My understanding. If we were to locate it to the right of the driveway. And the same square footage were to be freed up by moving the dirty wood pile to the. Left of the driveway hypothetically. We wouldn't have to cut trees. We would still have plenty of space. We'd just be sort of flip flopping the two. Features there. Do you imagine that you could? As long as that piece of real estate there on the right hand side of the driveway is not filled land. Do you foresee that you would be able to construct this? This sized. Set of panels there?
Yeah, the beauty, if it's the same amount of same amount of land, the the beauty of the arrays, it's they can be. Created in any shape, looking at the one behind me, if you can see me, that's just a long skinny one. We could stack the tables, you know, more rows and so. Essentially, if it comes down, if it's the same size footprint, the the design of the system could be adjusted to fit in. It seems to me that we should be able to do it very closely, if not perfect.
Yeah, well, some one other advantage is there's a little bit of. Agita from the snowmobile club. Whose trail runs in those trees. And if we could. Avoid having to disrupt that. We might. We might find it to be an easier process.
Yeah, again, if it's the same size, we can do it. I think that. Snowmobile Club and I keep bumping into each other because I started over at the Public Works and the same issue came up, I think, over there.
Well, and also, there may be some advantages to, I mean, there's also some discussion about changing some of the operations of the. Transfer station and needing a little more. Space in the driveway area for vehicles to move around. So. That might be what I'm hearing you say is that if we can. If we can switch a few things around in there and free up the space on unfilled land. Then it would still be a doable thing. And in fact, if I'm not mistaken. The three the three phase power is actually. Down the road a ways, that that might actually put the. Panels a little closer to the three phase power and require a little less. Of a connection.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
You might be a couple hundred feet closer.
Yep.
Okay.
Not to confuse things. Isn't this land out here? It's nothing on it. But I don't know, is it considered filmed because of the demolition?
No, I.
Capt, just buried.
Yeah. John, this there's you wouldn't be concerned about building on filled land. You're concerned about building on capped land. Is that correct?
Yeah, if it's a capped landfill, then it'd be quick. We can't penetrate that cap. So it talks, you have to go through a ballast that's just the more expensive. Obviously, you have DEP regulations and. If it had been just something that's filled, what we would be doing. Is we, when before we determine how we're going to build the array, we would go out there and do. A geotech test to make sure that the what we drive into the ground is going to be able to, you know, anchor be anchored safely into the ground. So I mean, if you're telling me, you know, if it's filled with rocks and piles and saying something like that, no problem. If it's, you know. An old rusty 1952 Ford down in there may might be being an issue or something.
Okay.
But that ball tested out that geotech test would test that. We have to do determine that before we go ahead anyway.
Not to confuse things anymore, but. I don't know what use the space out here would be. If it could be used for a solar farm array.
You know, it's very easy for me to determine as it was last time, you know. Essentially, what I'm trying to do with the town is identify what. You're looking at in terms of a bill that needs to be offset, how much you want to do it. You identify the land and within a few days I can determine what we can do there. And it's going to obviously, I'm going to assume that it's A, it's buildable. I don't have to worry about being a landfill or someone and so forth, but I can say. Take if you show me on a map where I have to work, or maybe I have to take another ride up and run around with somebody, we can certainly do that. So I don't want to get locked in from your standpoint into any one site because at this point you're still not locked into a site. The important thing is. You know, is it is what's determining the goal that you're trying to offset? Is it 40,000, 35,000, 50,000? And the credits and then obviously, we want to be able to do obviously three base base power is the preference to so.
I have some more. I have some more questions about the Inflation Reduction Act, but I want to leave the. The floor open for folks who have questions about. The specific proposal.
Or I don't know. About Mark or Chris, but I'm not. I'm an English major, so. This is.
I've got a couple of general questions. John, my name's Mark Burgess. Where do you see the technology of these things, the panels that you're installing today versus panels that were installed two years ago? And what do you think the difference is going to be two years from now?
So that's an interesting. So when I started in 2011 in solar. The panels that they were using then were 240 watts. And now they're, you know, upwards of 480. The difference is, and this is where it gets lost from a lot of layman's standpoint, is. They just made the panels bigger. It's not like the technology of the panels got so much better that from from a efficiency standpoint. So I think gains will only be incremental and small. I think the most important thing, Mark, at this point to consider is. Right now, the incentives are really good for solar and at some point you would see, I know, once CMP reaches their goal with this. CNI tariff net energy billing program. They're gonna, it's going to get closed and then instead of getting like, say, 18.89 cents. Three years from now, you might get 10 cents. So it changes if you go back to any state where they've hit these goals, but the incentives drop dramatically. So I get the long and long and short of it is all this, all this technologies and the. Efficiencies have been incremental. There has no been no big breakthrough. From the standpoint of the solar, the best thing about solar in the past several years is that. When they've upgraded the the frames and they've upgraded these things is their warranties are so much better. So you and these panels that we're using. Most of them have a 25 year production warranty. You know, so it used to be 10 years, 10 years, a few years ago. So now you're guaranteed a linear. It's almost like a fluorescent bulb, right? It's going to go down a little bit percent in brightness every year. So you have a 25 year warranty in terms of the production of that and like any warranty that over that period of time, it's, you know, it's prorated. It's kind of like a car. If we're into year 12 and a half, they're going to rate the difference, right? But. The the dependability of the equipment is incredible. And very, very dependable and the inverters are are really tremendous as well. And the system should, you know, easily be, you could have the system out there. Think about it. You had a system out there 40 years and it was still producing 80% of the. Energy, it would still be well worth hanging on to the equipment.
So what kind of a drop off do you see in these, John? Say, once they're 12 and a half years old, half their life expectancy or half of the warranty is gone. I mean, are they still producing 80 and 90% of what they originally did? Or does it drop off significantly?
No, so that's the beauty of it is it's it's about, it's actually, we use in our model. Mark, one half of 1% degradation. It's it's very linear. They can see it and they prove it in laboratories and Department of Energy. It's a very linear, so one half of 1% is what we use. I've seen some that are like a quarter of a third of percent, but the models that we use for savings. Is one half of 1%. So at 10 years. It's going to be 5% loss. At 20 years, it's going to still produce 90% of what it was originally designed. And there are systems out there today that are cranking and doing just that well.
Yep. So to break this down in real simple, simple terms. To buy a solar panel, is that solar panel going to produce enough electricity in its lifetime to pay for itself?
In its lifetime, absolutely. I'd have to sit there and think about your question more. So you're like a 300 watt panel. That's going to generate. 340 watts a year times you're talking me. You know, that time. 40 years versus the cost of it. I can't. Yes, I would imagine. Well, let's put it this, I have done enough. Analysis from a. Standpoint like of a municipality was to buy a system without tax incentives. They would still get the payback probably in about 12 to 14 years. So. Answer your question without a doubt, in the life of the panel, it would pay for itself.
So without the the rebate from the government or however that works, the subsidy, they would still pay for themselves in 12 years?
12, yeah, 12, as I said, 12 to 14 years seems to be a number. I mean, that wouldn't be, that's probably simple a map that I could. Send something over to Justin in the morning, but if you were to take. The 300, you know, and a, let's say, $400 panel. And and you're going to, and it's going to generate 340. Kilowatt hours a year. Times the 18 cents. Yeah, I'd have to do the math, Mark. I can't do it off the top of my head, but if there's, it would pay back. I've done enough, as I said, for because lots of municipalities would ask me instead of a PPF, they bought it out. At a project for a private investor that pays back in five or six years, typically the payback for a municipality is that, like I said, 12 to 14 years.
Thank you.
Yep.
And what kind of money do you have to?
And what kind of money do you have to escrow to um decommission it when it's at the end of its useful life?
Um, so obviously it's all done by the number of panels and it depends on what you want to do with it and when you do it. There's some really great articles written that if, you know, when decommissioning would be, some people would say it twenty years, I would, again, if you're looking at still producing eighty percent of the energy in forty years, I would still run it all the way out to that. So ninety-nine point nine percent, ninety-five, ninety-eight percent of the panel is, is recyclable. And there's companies that are started nationally that are literally taking solar panels back in. And so right now the thinking as that the cost of decommissioning would be I've, I've heard even in terms of the recycling cost, but I always say I would add a few thousand dollars. There's just issues that could do to that, but it should be very close depending on when to recycle. Because the silicon, the electric, the copper, some of the framing and all that stuff is all recyclable. Now, these, these, these newer panels don't have some of the heavy metals that were in the old panels that used to be an issue. They're really easy to recycle. And if somebody was to do it at twenty years, what's happening is these companies are actually coming in and then selling those panels to somebody else because they still have a tremendous production likely.
Do we want to go from here?
Well, I have a couple of questions because, uh, uh, John, you had mentioned in a letter to Justin and, and one that he forwarded to the board that there was recent statutory changes in the federal government uh in the, in, in the form of the Inflation Reduction Act. And I did a, a little bit of um, you know, Google searching, which I suppose makes me barely an expert on this. Um, and I'm wondering if you might be able to answer some questions uh so that I'm clear on exactly what's in the pipeline. And I know that some of the benefits identified in that legal change start January one of next year.
That's correct.
So maybe you could give us a quick overview of exactly how that changes the landscape and and, and what that might mean for a town like Monmouth where we've got a bill of forty-one thousand five hundred dollars of electricity that we might be able to uh save something off.
Yeah. So I, I, I think from the IRA, the IRA is where you refer to it is the biggest thing in the, is that when, when, when solar started to be really developed, especially in the two thousand and ten era, the tax credit was, you could actually get that in the form of a check. And so as a solar installer could be paid that directly. That, that ended in, I think about ten, two thousand and ten or two thousand and twelve. And then they went to the point where it was purely a tax credit and then you had to bring in a, an entity that had tax appetite. The beauty of the IRA, in my opinion, what makes me most excited about, and the reason I got into solar was to help nonprofits and, and as well, most likely, for the most part, is that the value of the tax credit now can be sent to the town municipality or nonprofit in the form of a check. So the thirty percent tax credit that was normally sent to the investor or the investor put on his taxes, that same thirty percent value can be sent to the uh nonprofit organization or a town, in this case a town. So you would get a check for thirty percent of the value of that. That's the baseline. So it's at least thirty percent. Right off the bat, you're saving thirty. So now, Mark, to my calculations a few minutes ago, if you took thirty percent off that top, the, you know, the panel use in terms of municipality would come down significantly. Now you get into what some of the other, what they call adders in the IRA, in the IRA. So the first one is um is, uh, if it's a low income area, they give you an additional ten percent. So you could get thirty to forty. The other one is, depends on the equipment you use. So uh, if you, you meet the requirements for American-made, you can get another ten percent. And then another one that has us excited about it because we have our own apprentice school, electrician school is uh, if you use a certain percentage of the uh hours to build the array or used with apprentices, you can get another ten percent. So there's all these adders out there. The biggest question at this point can from us is there's not enough definition on exactly what to do to qualify for those. So that, we're expecting that to come out of the uh IRS or the uh Fed in January, all the detail of it, where we know, you know, exactly what we need to do. But what we're basically working with our customers right now is saying, look, it, when we know that, what we'll do is we'll, we'll try to make decisions with you. We won't make the decision ourself that, hey, you can get an extra ten percent overall, but it might cost you two percent more in terms of beating the equipment criteria. So you get two percent more in terms of your cost to your panel. So your project cost goes up about three percent. However, you're getting an overall ten percent more savings. So once we have all those details in January, we'll be able to speak to them more definitively, but there is certainly, in my opinion, at least ten percent that should be able to be done. So I would think the it's, I think it's realistic, though not guaranteed that if their town was to just say, we'd want to go ahead and buy this and bond it, forty percent would be a realistic number in terms of coming back to the town. And that's total system cost, everything. Engineers, interconnection, everything.
So for a hundred and eighty-four kilowatt system, if the town were to hire a company such as yours to construct this at the same site, at the, at the transfer station, for example, um, uh, can you give us an idea of, you don't have to give us a number that we're going to hold you to. This is not a bidding process, but just a range of uh scale of how much money we're talking about for that size system?
Yeah. So, uh, again, this is because we had to bring a three-phase power in there. It was, so this system, I think in the, in the bid was at six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars was the cost of this system.
Okay.
So, you know, if it's thirty percent, obviously, what's, what's that, a hundred and ninety-nine or two hundred thousand dollars? Um, forty percent, two hundred and forty or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars off the top of my head.
Right.
So you're taking a big chunk of that expense. And then if you were to just bond it, and again, I don't know your bonding rate. I don't know the term, but you could probably end it up with a point where while you're paying for the system, you'd be positive cash flow. Pretty sure we could figure that out.
Yeah. I mean, I'm doing the math here. If, if, for example, I mean, we just go through this hypothetical situation. If we, if there was a, and I just assumed, which one did I do? I think I did thirty percent reduction. So not even any adders, right? Just a thirty, a conservative thirty percent reduction on the the price that you just quoted us, then the net cost to the town would be four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And at four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, if we were spread that across a ten-year bond, and I'm assuming they would allow us to do a hundred percent, that it might actually be a requirement of the Inflation Reduction Act is a hundred percent financing. Is that correct?
Uh, I think that it's, it mentions that, but I, again, without all the details, I don't, I don't know that that's sure.
You were, even if we were to spread that across a ten-year bond, which has been sort of the tradition here in Monmouth, and our credit rating is pretty decent at this point, um, four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars on a ten-year bond puts us pretty close to parity for what we are currently paying C M P. So instead of paying C M P, we'd be saying, we'd be paying the bank. And after ten years, then we would be paying ourselves. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think if you factored in a little escalator, that's why I think you'd probably be slightly cash flow positive.
Yeah, because if, and that doesn't take into account a twenty percent increase year on year that C M P is asking for, at least for the next five-year horizon. We don't know what's going to happen after that, of course. Right, right. So, so we would be, as soon as the system is built, we'd be uh bulletproof from the standpoint of whatever energy inflation is happening in the electricity markets. And we would be essentially close to parity. We'd have to see, I mean, I suppose we could go to a fifteen-year amortization instead of a ten-year amortization and make it even Steven for sure. But nonetheless, we'd be paying the bank for ten or fifteen years for a system that is warranted for twenty-five years and may last longer. Who knows?
Sounds right.
Okay.
And then if you got an extra ten percent or something, it'd be even better.
Right. Pretty good.
Good.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
What would be, now, what is the drawback? There, there was an option that was discussed about buying into an array that was being put up in another town. Southern Maine, somewhere Bitterford or somewhere.
Fox Ford.
Um, that's a competitor of theirs.
Yep. Well, yeah, when we do these all the time as well, I think we even have one in our bit that just wasn't really spelled out very much. So when you buy into a, an array, uh, offsite array, and there's absolutely, there's not, nothing wrong with that at all. Um, you're just getting a percentage of savings of whatever it is, like fifteen percent, whatever it might be. And I don't know who the competitor is and what they're looking at. And so first of all, so that savings is locked in for the duration of that, that contract, whatever it might be, twenty years. So as the, as, as the C, the rate falls or rises up, so if it keeps rising up, your, your cost to them's going to rise up, but then so is your credit. So you'll always, you know, you have a locked in savings on that and very attractive. I think the thing about it is when you look at in terms of this system, as I said, I think right now you'd be looking at a twenty-eight percent credit roughly there about savings right there about in those first few years under the P P A. Um, the other thing that I think that's extremely valuable is the ability to promote the fact that, especially once you buy it out, that you, you own the renewable energy credits, which in terms of your math, uh, we didn't factor in if you were to sell those credits, but if you retain those credits, it actually lowers your carbon footprint directly. Cause if you own the system, you can basically do the math to determine how much carbon footprint reduction you did. So if, so if sustainability is important to the, to the, the town and, and the residents, then that's the biggest, a big, a big advantage over the additional savings. Um, you know, when we produce a cash flow to the town, uh, ultimately with, when you factor in all, everything else, you would see that we'll have a maintenance agreement factored in there. Um, so you don't have to worry about potentially taking care of the panels itself. You just need to worry about mowing around it. You can see behind me that, you know, it just needs to be mowed and cleared. Um, the uh maintenance agreement will be built in the cost of that, the cost of the inverter replacement. It'll be all factored into everything you do. So when you're looking at a P and L from us, it's, it is fully loaded. Uh, there's not going to be any surprises in terms of, you know, coming back. Okay. Who's going to take care of the panels? Who's going to make sure that there's protection is, is, is what it's supposed to be. And part of those maintenance agreements also is we do uh, depending on what level, we can co-monitor the system with you uh where you'd be able to say that we, you know, the system is producing fine, but on one day it's not. You know, the, the system is actually set up that you can, you can put in alerts. So if it dropped well below like fifteen percent production estimate, it'll, it'll send out an alert email or text. And basically what happens is we go and look, well, it's snowing today. Now we know it's not, but if it's a beautiful sunny day and that, we'd be able to say, okay, do some diagnosis from our place. And then we either have, we have to go up there and do it ourselves, or maybe ask you guys just to reboot an inverter or something like that. But um, you know, from the standpoint of it's very easy and it's, you know, the long term, there's not a lot of heavy lift in terms of the town or municipality because we do all the maintenance on it as it goes. The biggest, and, and again, as I said, we factor in the cost of replacing the inverter at year. I think we do it at year twenty-one um, in the, in the pro forma.
John, can you give us an idea, once the town, if, if the town were to option on uh the system and own it, can you give us a just a ballpark of what a maintenance agreement might cost on an annual basis? For a system of that size?
I'm going, I'm going to say less than two thousand dollars.
And how much does an inverter cost when it, when it needs to be replaced in year twenty-one?
Uh, and it would be a few inverters in this. I would say that inverter is probably going to be in the ten to twelve thousand dollar range. Did I lose you?
Nope, we're still here.
I can't, just can't find you on my screen. That's all right. There you are. Um, yeah, I could send the, up to Justin, the, the cash flow. So you could actually see that, you know, you can see where the buyout would happen. You could see, so the other thing I mentioned too with these renewable energy credits, if you don't save them, then you can claim the carbon footprint. But once you own the system, if you wanted to sell the renewable energy credits, it's an open market. It's a commodity. Um, and typically they're going to fetch between twenty and thirty dollars per thou, per rec right now. So this rec, this system would produce about two hundred recs, it's thousand per, two hundred thousand, yeah, two hundred recs at thirty, so six thousand dollars a year potentially in the revenue if you were to sell them over and above the savings. And that, that's done very simply. You could sign up with us to handle that sale of that, or you could sign up with a broker. You wouldn't have to do anything. They would just send you the checks.
And that's on, that's on top of the offsets that we would be earning from C M P.
Correct. Yeah.
Just an additional form of income that certain investors are willing to pay because the energy is green.
Correct. Yeah. You know, I'm, most towns that I'm talking to now want to retire because they do want to be able to promote and the carbon footprint reduction. You know, I don't know in terms of, you know, the, from the school, you know, you know, more and more towns, the interest in solar is coming from the students in terms of thinking about doing the right thing. And, and so owning, having that and being able to boast about your carbon reduction sometimes to the students is something that they're very interested in keen. And I don't know if they have a sustainability club at your, I don't know, or you have an R S U or how were you set up up there?
Yeah, R S U.
Yeah, yeah. Again, that's, that's, that's more detail. You don't have to make that decision or discussion now. It just, you know, let you know that it's there to, to ponder.
To ponder or to cash in?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I like the, I like, personally, I like beating the chest that you're doing the right thing for the environment, but I don't have to pay the bill. So maybe it's while you're paying the note, you, you take the money. And then after that, you you, you could retire.
So any, anything else we need?
We can let you go, John, if you would like.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. And if you have any more questions, just let me know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Our next department reports.
I've sent a report on, hope you have any questions, a lot of things going on. All right. Talking about the transfer station, stickers, fees and whatever we're going to do, I suggest that we get rid of everything else and then deal with that. Cause it probably won't be a quick discussion.
Get rid of everything else.
Go through the rest of the agenda.
Oh, do it at the end.
That's just my suggestion. You want to talk about it now?
Did you have a, your proposal?
Yeah.
Yes.
Why don't we just lay it out there and then? Cause my suggestion would be, let's, let's do something. And if it doesn't work, we can change it because if we just keep running around in circles. Cause my suggestion would be let's, let's do something. And if it doesn't work, we can change it because if we just keep running around in circles, we're not. We're running out of time to be able to order stickers. If that's what we're gonna do before January, so we have to do something. So if you have, um. You have some concerns, that's fine, but let's just try to do something. And then if we run into more problems, we can always change. That's just my, that's my suggestion. Go ahead, Dan.
Um, the biggest issue that's come up is to recap what's going on is that the changing to the stickers takes away the. Free items that are on the back of the dump permit. Uh, and how do we administer them to the residents to not take away the free items? Um, or do we not do the free items? Myself and the town office being, you know, the. Being ladies at the window that pass out permits and, and deal with it. Don't feel that issuing two items for residents is going to be helpful or keep the process simple. They'll be issuing with sticker. And a free item card. So now two things for residents to keep track of. Separate items. We discussed previously putting. Information on the vehicle's registration certificate for the people. It's illegal per state law to deface a registration certificate. And we, you can't even get people to show us our permits out there. Uh, I can't imagine they're gonna wanna, you know, gladly hand over their registration certificate. So my, you know, we're gonna make changes. Let's make them all at once. Um, use the term rip off the Band-Aid, if you will. The transition period, no matter what we do is going to be difficult. They always are, but we'll make it through it. I mean, people are upset now with how the transfer station works. So any changes are not going to be met with any type of enthusiasm or cooperation. The free stuff on the back of the permit card is, is not free at all. It's just. It's just not. It, it doesn't, allows them to not pay cash or write a check that day. But they're, they're paying it in their tax bill because I'm still disposing of that item. It's still in my budget to have to take care of disposing it. Therefore, it's passed on to the tax rate. So. The free stuff, you know, when it was developed, I think it took away, it was a compensation for not having a free dump day anymore. And I totally understand that. Uh, but. Where we're moving forward, it just doesn't seem, from my opinion and from the people that work with it, that it fits in. And it's, it's really. Something that we need to make this process more complicated with by trying to keep it. So I recommend we go to the stickers and we do away with the free items that we have. To offset that, proceed increase. I'll leave the transfer station dump fees alone. I'm willing to say for at least three years. Um, we're already a bargain compared to other transfer stations that is now. Um, we're not here to make a profit. What we want is responsible dumping of items. Not have stuff thrown in our ditches or in people's woods, woods, lots, roads. But the sticker does. Help us ensure that we're not a dumping ground for other towns to offload their trash and demo at our expense. So. We still have to have some regulation there. So my recommendation is to go stickers, do away with the free stuff and just continue with the fee schedule the way it is to help offset the cost. Of what is brought in. Not every resident brings in other items. A lot of residents have their own trash haulers, either, uh. A gentleman, uh, John Cushman that does Monmouth and Wales residents exclusively, or they have Riverside disposal or other trash companies and have dumpsters near their property. Those residents are paying their, paying the transfer station fees in their taxes and then not utilizing the transfer station or utilizing it very little. So the fees really. Are just targeting the people that do use it exclusively for extra items besides household trash and recycle, which is free to dump. Um, and just help offset some of the costs extended and. Makes it fair for the residents that don't even bring extra, um, demo or. Refrigerators, tires or other things in to, to, uh, cover that expense. So. That's where I'm at. Stickers, do away with free stuff, continue with the fee schedule as is. It creates less pay to work as far as two separate items, a sticker and a free item certificate. We have the existing fee schedule that's been in place forever. I'm not gonna ask for any increases. I'm gonna ask for some clarifications if we go. With that, but no increases. And. It keeps people in check. We're not gonna get. Well, I can bring seven refrigerators in because there's no fees for it. So, hey, Uncle Joe who lives in Wayne and Aunt Sarah who lives in. Topsom, bring your refrigerator up. I can bring it to Monmouth and there's no charge. I think. I think that will, I think that will happen because people already take advantage of the system we have in place. Not everybody, but some. And I can say that because I'm on the front line and I see it week after week and deal with it. So. That's where I'm at with the moment with it. Thoughts? Questions, concerns, different ways to do it.
I support your proposal.
Yeah, don't worry. You guys have put a lot of time and you've talked to everybody that's involved in this situation and people would have to deal with it. You've got input from everybody and it sounds like you've come up with a solution.
That's, that's where we're at. This is, you know. This is not reinventing the, the whole thing. It's just, it's a. The minor change to still keep things going forward. And like Justin said, and I want to agree, if, if this doesn't work, we'll know right off. I mean, the first six months. Of twenty twenty-three are going to be difficult no matter what, because we're gonna have to. Get the stickers out to people. The stickers won't be issued with registrations. They're gonna be valid for calendar year, January one to December thirty-one. So we'll make stickers available at town office, Monmouth and Wales, obviously. And we'll make stickers available at the transfer station. Be just, you know, pick them up there. It does require that the resident will be making a separate trip to the town office. While that's new for Monmouth, it's not new for most other transfer stations, uh, in the surrounding communities. They have. Calendar year stickers or, or permits and, and the residents have to make a separate trip. I don't want to inconvenience our residents more than I have to, but at the same time, if we're transitioning to what we are, we have to do certain things.
Stickers we used to have were calendar year.
Okay. Now, when you, I mean, you're calling this a transition, um, what do you propose is gonna happen with all the cards that have been issued? Someone registered their car last week. They've got a permit that says it's good until. November of twenty twenty-three and they can get rid of these items on the back. Are you gonna let them continue to use these cards until they expire?
I think it makes sense to. But I don't want to muddy the waters either, but I also don't want to force them to have to get to the transfer station or the town office between January first and January thirty-first. To be able to dump their, their items. So I make, I think it makes sense to have a grace period of leeway on it. You know, phase it in as best we can. Again, not trying to, trying to inconvenience as few people and inconvenience the process as possible, but. A transition is a transition.
And the card is a good proof. If you're, if you're at the transfer station getting a sticker. When they show the card, the transportation person can give them a sticker right there. You've already proved that you're allowed to have one.
We're just gonna stop issuing the cards, but the ones that are out there, you'll continue to let them. Mark the items off. It's gonna be hard.
It's going to be hard.
To say, no, you've got to pay to do that. When it's like, this doesn't expire till this date and it was written by a town.
Right.
And to say that now it's no good anymore. It's gonna be a rough one.
Right. So, so I'd like to keep it as simple as possible and just say, yep, it's fine. Two tires, no problem. Have a good day. You know, that's, that's what we've always been doing for, for.
Yeah.
Forever, you know, so.
Just let it run its course.
Let it run its course and. You know, now that we, if we move forward with a decision, that's when. The, the stuff will come out of the woodwork and we'll hear all the other stuff that we haven't heard yet and, and we can revisit it and, and.
And it's done one.
Yes. So we can revisit it and, and. And, you know, change what we need to or what we feel we need to.
And, and you come up with a way to make them feel more comfortable about money changing hands at the transfer station. I guess it's always been a concern from what I understand, you know, so.
Certainly dealing with cash down there is not best practice.
Yeah.
And it puts the employee at risk.
Yes.
One for being accused and it also puts the town at risk if somebody actually does start taking it. We wouldn't know, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's not a great. Not a great way to do it.
Yeah.
But we can keep thinking about that. We don't want to make too many.
The receipt book should be used that, that the attendants hand a copy to the, to the resident and, and turn in a copy to me. They're, they're numbered, they're sequential. And any slip that they void, for whatever reason, has to be turned in. So when, when they do their cash out at the end of the day, and when I do the, the cash out. When I take that information, go through, we're double checking for, for consecutive slips and. If there's one missing, it has to be accounted for and explained. Um. Russ Fingers, we've, we've had, you know, don't have any issues that I'm aware of. Right. Um, you know, there's, there's the tremendous accountability by these employees out there and. You know, we don't have missing slips and, you know, there's always an explanation for why a slip was voided or something. And what they, you know. It, it balances every week, what they show they've taken in, what the receipts actually show. I've never, in my short time, a year now, I, I haven't had any issues with it. I do understand the concerns and the issues and the, and. The exposure it creates for certain things. And I think, you know. It's something to look at going forward and it would make, I think, the system easier for everybody involved to make some changes to it when the time's right. Um, I think we just need to nail down the basic operating changes first and then look at making. More grand changes to how we process the money coming in or out.
It's in the, the, the app world, the phone world, you know, people.
Like a square or something.
Well, either having a square or having a Venmo account that people could, you know, pay the five dollars through their Venmo account, you know, so those are. I never have.
Thankfully with technology, there's a number of options.
Yes.
Um, to, to go with that are. Very user friendly for, for us on, on the, on the accounting end and for the resident on the other end. So.
So I'm sure they must have something like that out in Winthrop with the amount of stuff that they weigh. They don't make people pay cash up there. I'm sure that.
Yeah, I would, if, if we end up going that route, I'll, I'll research what other, what other people are doing specifically.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
For another day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. It's definitely open discussion for it down the road, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's do it.
We need a motion. I think so.
Effective January one. Just as soon as they can go the calendar year. You know, as far as starting, we can start issuing stickers, but.
Yeah, as long as we can get the stickers. I think we should be able to, like, I can't imagine it's that complicated, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have to have all the stickers out by December thirty-first. To all the residents or available for all the residents.
No, because they'll issue them at the transfer station. So if you get there, you don't have one, they'll be like, can I see your card or can I see your registration? It's just.
Basically be an exchange program.
Yeah.
Well, not an exchange. Well, I'm keeping my card.
It's a contract.
Sports power and it's tracking, Donna's tracking. So you've been.
Hey, you got any extra spots for two tire dealers?
Uh, yeah, it makes, you know. To get a sticker at the transfer station, North Cobb, have to show your registration. So the people that have. Four vehicles in the family will still get, can get four stickers.
Right.
Uh, which just makes their life easier that they won't be turned away or, or whatever.
Do we have a sense of what, uh, what's happening to disposal costs? What, where, where the tipping fees are going?
Oh, they're outrageous. And they're gonna keep climbing because the, the state has no plan for solid waste whatsoever.
So a percentage rate or dollar amounts, I mean, what, what are the prices going from to?
Yeah. If you look at my budget right now, I'm, I'm, I'm. Percentage spent higher than I would like to be. So. I would. I would hazard a guess that I'll be overspent on tipping fees for my budget for this, for this fiscal year. Nothing is, nothing has gone down. The, the transportation costs went up, tipping fees at the facilities went up. You know. You know. One of the transportation costs doubled from a hundred dollars a trip to two hundred dollars a trip, just like that. And I didn't budget for that. So.
Some of that happened when, you know, diesel was six bucks a gallon, but you know, that's not going back down no matter what happens now. Right now they've got that fee, they're keeping it.
So instead of, you know, with last year when we, when we entered the numbers, I had, I had a small cushion on most of those related fees. Um, I don't expect. Cause I didn't increase those numbers at all across the board. I, I don't expect I'll have any cushion. I'll probably be percentage overspend, you know, I don't know the number for sure.
What adjustments do you want to the fee schedule?
I just need, I want some clarification.
I thought we were gonna get into that another day. I, I move that we, uh, accept. The proposal of the public work director that we have stickers that we phase out the so-called free disposal system.
I'll second that.
So would you, would you be willing to accept a friendly amendment to that proposal? Because I heard another nuance to that proposal that actually would get you an additional vote. All right, what's that? And, uh, that our, uh, fees that we're charging for the next two or three years would go unchanged. The next two or three years? That was the, that was the part of the sales pitch that I heard.
Yes, that was part of my, my nugget.
If you would be willing to accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion, you might get a unanimous support.
I will accept.
So remember that one, Doug.
I'll second the, uh, proposal as amended.
Okay. So this is the motion by Joe, second by Mark with a. I think very candid.
Friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment. To, uh, do what's the public works director or, or file with his, uh. Uh, proposal on the use of stickers and, uh. The phasing out of the free item, uh, stuff and the, uh. No fee change for three years. Uh, I think that's all of it. Yes, all those in favor?
Don't look back, look forward now.
Yes.
I just. Take their credit is due to, uh, Lori Walker and, uh, Trudy Lee, the transfer station first. We've had many, many, many lengthy discussions about. The spider web of changes that this, this brings and, and how to deal with them and what best way. So this is a. That's the combined solution of all of us involved. Of hopefully what will be, um, as unburdenous as possible for the residents and for the people they can care of it day by day.
A good job, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public works questions?
Good evening. I want to talk to you about a get out of jail free sticker.
It's the go on the back of my registration. That's been awfully manhood.
All right. So I, I handed you all this back and I just, just, um. Are you getting too much information with this or is this okay? Everybody already, this stuff that you're getting? Like my paper has a copy to see it going up. Um, October. Complaint wise, our complaints dropped down, um, as you would say, brought down two hundred and forty-seven complaints. This month compared to last month, we were, uh. We're over three hundred. Yeah, we had three hundred and twelve last month and it dropped down to two forty-seven, but that being set aside, the, the. Petting point we had was a little, uh, quite some schedule. As you can see from the, the. As you can see from the the arrest. That we had in the. A new addition to the to the. Monthly void juvenile arrest, which we don't deal with very often, fortunately, but we have three juvenile arrests in. On October. As you're all aware, um, Officer Bachman is out for sixty eight weeks with broken leg. So I just like him, off the more off the firm and I have more to cover the the open shift. Um, so far, we've been able to cover most of the opening. Most of the openings, um. However, we have gone uncovered to some from some nights from twenty three hundred to zero six hundred, where I just. From taking call out as they come in. Only so many hours, like. Above that, we had Sid and Westling out three days last week with the flu and. Austin Morrow was scheduled to go to training last week for the three days and unfortunately, they canceled the training, so. We have her back. I'd just like to say kudos to these guys for. Contributing and covering all the shifts and working the overtime they had. Um, Olivia, Olivia fifty four hours of overtime in the past eight days. And even though he felt sick, he had thirteen hours of overtime and Austin Sherman covered forty seven hours for us last week. He gets the reserve, so. Yeah, plus his full-time job, so.
Chief, I mentioned arrests, what about summonses?
Yeah, these are, these are, um. Summons and stuff like that will be, I I covered on in the the larger report in here. Um, these are just. Criminal arrests. That come in and taken. A couple of issues we we've come up with, um, problems. State domain has updated their main crash reporting system, which is uploaded into our laptops last week. And our laptops aren't able to handle the upgrades, the. The upgrades in the reporting system, so. We don't have main crash reporting system on our laptops in our crews because they just. Reached out to. State surplus to see if they have any newer model. Computer for the cruisers and. They don't, they don't have anything newer than what we already have, and that's probably why they have them in state surplus, because they don't.
How old are the laptops?
Um, the the CF, the Panasonic CF fifty fours, they're probably. Seven, eight years older. And the problem is that. They're so expensive, I mean. I've just bought. Ten of them and it was. Thirty six or thirty seven thousand for ten of them. It's not just computers, the cost is in the mounting systems, driving systems. They go on the cruisers too.
Which are not compatible, of course.
Not compatible with with a new.
Your phone character.
They came, they came deciding for it in Panasonic, so.
Technology companies.
Well, instead of deciding for it being on the left side, the new CF fifty fives are on the center, so you can't use the same mountain.
Are these like super specific for your particular use?
That's that's the first problem we ran into last week. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention i- is, um. We went over about proposals to upgrade our our five of our tasers. And. They're nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars for like five tasers. Ones we have, again, the computer programs in them, they're not compatible with software. Can't download the information if they're deployed, the older ones, if they're deployed, we can't download the information for. Ensure that they were used properly. The option is, the option is, is that um they will. Taser will enter into a a five-year finance contract. Thirty nine fifty eight per year, uh, but they did say that. They would do a first year payment of a thousand and split the difference among the, maybe four, four years. I bring this to you because. If we do that, if I do that to. Upgrade these these tasers that needed to be, needing to be updated. That we're talking about a five-year contract, so we need the commitment of town to. Okay, that. Five-year contract.
Is that some of that was already in your budget?
It was not. But I can, I can swing a thousand dollars in the first year if we. And and in in the back of that, um. Back that I gave you is the, uh. Proposal for taser, so you can actually see what what. Breakdown is in the cost, not cheap, new technology and new equipment and police work is. Incredibly expensive.
And even though this sets code expiration seven thirty one, they're still gonna honor that.
No. You're you're looking at probably five percent change in price.
How often? How often does the force deploy a taser?
This year, I think we've utilized the taser, had to utilize the taser four times over the last year. They're more of a deterrent.
You show that, you show the taser to. Suspect.
They take the red dots on, they usually.
Well, so they really don't have to be updated if.
But, you know, and that's an option, you you take that, you take that. Rule out of the use before, continue on and.
What are the implications of using tasers that are not state-of-the-art?
All because someone gets injured or.
And the town will be liable if.
Yeah, well, yeah, because you're supposed, supposed to be able to download. Taser information, and if someone comes back and says, he tased me. Twelve times. There's no way I can confirm that, you know, it's. Because again, they don't support that software that the old tasers use now, so.
Except for the officer's testimony. For a sworn testimony, which is.
Your word against theirs, and you know how that goes.
In court, I think. Law enforcement is often. You know, because you're trustworthy people. And sometimes you're.
Not everybody believes that.
The other side isn't as trustworthy.
But the more information, the better, yes, but the more information, the better, and if you have a. Have the software printout to. Approve it and back it up.
So are are we being called upon to? Expenditure. At this time?
Yes, to approve it.
I make a motion that we improve the contract to do the thousand dollars out of your budget and then do the rest. In your coming budgets for the five years.
One of the things the salesman told us is that. Whether it's five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, anything to lock us in for the first year and then they'll. Prorate the remainder of the costs over the next four years.
We need to ask voters for approval to do that, or is this a quantity?
Where this is kind of like, uh, it it's generally an operating expense, we're not really indebted to town. So I think you're okay approving this kind of a. It's not a huge amount of money, it's not like we're uh getting bond counsel or taking out a formal lease from the bank, it's kind of like a.
So so the proposal is a thousand dollars?
Yes, for the first year.
It doesn't lock us in to other years, we we would have an opportunity to vote on.
Well, no, because they're giving you the tasers in year one with a thousand bucks, so we would, we would own them essentially, they'd be financed.
But then the rest of the money would be appropriated in your budget, which. People would vote on.
Would be approved by.
Would have to be.
So we have the authority to do this.
Of course, I know.
Well, if they vote down the police department budget, because that's where it would be, it would be, it would be, it would just be in that general line, and so if they abolish the police department, we'd have all kinds of. Other things like cruisers that were leasing and all that, that we'd all, we'd have to unwind all of that stuff. So this wouldn't be the only one.
Why couldn't it be a separate uh article? Why couldn't it be a separate article?
It could, we just don't. We don't usually put things of that size. Like a five thousand dollar expenditure would generally be put into the department budget.
Which equals more than just three pages as it is.
Yes, but.
You wouldn't prove one and not the other. So put it together.
Well, maybe you would, maybe you would, maybe the town uh would want to uh. Obligate itself to a taser contract.
You'd be, you'd be tied into it because you'd already paid a thousand dollars.
We'd have an obligation.
Your obligation to pay the rest of the taxes off when they're ready.
And that's why I wanted to, guys, because you, we are talking about a five-year contract on this and then.
At the end of five years, do we own? And how long? Well, when, how long, how long did, how long have we owned the current tasers? How long has?
Two thousand and seven.
Alright, so they're like fifteen years old?
Oh, do you have any sense of what the computer upgrade is gonna cost? That will be the next.
You mean that the PD?
Yeah. Well, I mean, but the cruisers and the laptops and.
The laptop.
I mean, thirty, five hundred a piece times, how many are we gonna buy?
Well, I I need five. Uh, this is what's out there right now, state police. Are upgrading all of their. Computers, they're going from the Panasonic. Fifty fives to the the Dells, bringing the Dells. So all that will be coming into state surplus market very, very shortly. And. I know that those computers will all. And do what we need them to do. The only thing we need to do is upgrade the. From Avram's. Because that's what their problem is, they bought them at at the end of the year thing two years ago. Get a mortgage out, now they're upstairs. So then it's gonna be a hundred and fifty of those coming into the surplus market, we'll see.
So we won't be looking at twenty brands to get five of them and get them.
Right, because it's all going, you you can usually pick up. Two fifty three hundred dollars each in state surplus. Then the cost of the the mounting units, probably another two fifty three hundred dollars, so we're talking. Pennies on the dollar going, if I can. Get them through state surplus versus, and that's what I hope is. Not to go back to the voters for twenty five thousand dollars for five computers. Two thousand and sixteen police interceptor has been repaired, I told you last time, it's been out of service, so. Fucked up an injector and filled the whole engine full of, full of gas and. Um, but they were able to drain everything else, change the fluids in a new injector and. Something else and for four hundred and eighty bucks, it's back on the road, so. Yes, yeah. Any questions on the the statistics that I provided? We did give out five hundred and fifty pieces of candies Monday night. We did that and we'll get out of jail free stickers.
Where are the summons as included in the report?
It would be, um. Are you talking like criminal summons or traffic summons?
Either one.
Because under, under, I I could, traffic summons and citations, I could. Pull that information out, but. What it breaks down to in here is the number of traffic stops and it doesn't break down on the number of traffic citations this year.
Well, some people get charged with a criminal offense. summons them, you don't arrest them. You summons them for it.
In some cases, yeah, yeah.
But that's not separately broken down?
And and I may, may have, um. Just represented something to you here, um. Back of the front seat. Three arrests were operating under the influence, two tried, you see, I know there was no physical arrest. The arrest was a theft, was a criminal summons.
That was a summons, okay.
The arrest of violating conditions of release. That was a summons, the arrest of driving to endanger was a summons. Um, and the unregistered motor vehicle, that was a summons. But there are other, there are other criminal cases that that, um, people were summoned on. That, um. Weren't represented in here because they're, they're. They weren't summoned within this month period, so if they were summoned. At the beginning, you know, November first, it's not gonna show up, it doesn't show up.
And how far out are you summoning them out? Three or four months?
Yes, yeah, um, domestic violence complaints, we have to do within an eight-week. Window, but you can't some, summon them out any further than eight weeks. But everything else, we summons out beyond eight weeks to give us time to get all the evidence we need and the reports done and get them. So we're not crunching time, but the the DV cases are are utmost in front and we get them out in eight weeks.
It's a very crowded dock. How are things moving in the court system? It's been slow, very slow.
I had a trial. Last week. On an arrest. Eighteen months ago. And you guys have been in custody for eighteen months.
Jeez. That's not good.
Time served.
Yeah, bye.
Any questions on?
No, thanks very much.
Need a motion. I did make the motion.
On the tasers? I'll second the motion on it.
So Chris made a motion and Dan has seconded it to. Purchase the uh. Tasers over a five-year period.
I think we just need to say. Thousand bucks.
Starting with a thousand dollars this year.
Starting with a thousand dollars. So we don't commit ourselves to a longer period. Okay, all those in favor of? Thank you.
I've got, I've got the hands, if you want me to read. Lights to school for coloring contest, both a fun time, we had ten students pre-K through third grade. Halloween event was a huge success, our auxiliary sold out of food and we handed out candy to six hundred and forty kiddos. Car fire training last week went well and some of our newest members got some good hands-on training. This Sunday afternoon, the fire department will be conducting a fire safety presentation for the local Girl Scouts. On Saturday, November twenty sixth, the fire department will be handing out hot cocoa just prior to the downtown tree lighting ceremony. Did you get this? Did you want it?
I did.
When did he say the tree lighting was? The the non-tree lighting? The no-tree lighting?
We, we submitted, or momentarily will be submitting our, the stream crossing grant for the Wilson Pond, you know, the big culvert that Dan fixed the summer that collapsed. We're, we're asking for the full hundred and fifty, uh, that would require a a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar commitment. From the town. The cost of replacing that, but like, it's more of like a bridge, it's a big concrete, uh, thing, instead of a plastic culvert. Laura Dawn and I went through all of the um delinquent accounts, we think we'll, over, over the next few months, we'll have thirteen accounts to bring to you to authorize for sale or whatever. Ever, however you want to dispose of them, there's thirty one in total, but the rest of them all have various degrees of other. Issues such as they need to be written off or their mobile homes on leased land, which is just. You can't sell them because you don't have, you don't uh feed the land, so. Just a reminder, the town office will be closed next Thursday for Veterans Day, which is on Friday this year.
Can we go back to the fourteen accounts first? Thirteen?
Yeah, thirteen, thirteen, that will be. That will bring to you to. A determinative disposition, so they're eligible for sale if you want to sell them.
Okay, and so what's the process there in terms of?
At your next meeting, if I get. At your, at your next meeting, if I get the, the foreclosure policy back from the town attorney, I'll bring that to you and you will approve that. And that will give you your policy about how we would go about, uh, the processes, the steps involved. Where. I just notice sent to the previous owner, they get sixty days to. Come forward and pay, and if they don't, then we put it out to bid, and if it's out to bid and they come in to pay during the bid process before we open them, they can have it back. But if they don't meet those, then when the bids are open, it's.
It's, um.
And you have to determine lien holders too, definitely.
Yep.
Yep, someone's gotta do the title search.
Yes. Most of these don't, don't have lien holders, that's why they're in this position, because they don't have mortgages against them. Otherwise, we would have contacted the banks a long time ago and said, hey. And they would have paid.
Yeah.
Most likely, but.
Can you give us an idea of the thirteen accounts, like? How much money are we talking about?
They're all over the place. Some of them are, are, they're only, um, one year within the foreclosure period, so they might own, they might own twenty-five hundred bucks because it's from two thousand nineteen, which is the. Which is the earliest year that we can go back, and some of these have delinquent taxes back to two thousand and eight and they owe thirty, forty thousand dollars.
So safe to say we're talking six figures? In, in aggregate?
I think in total, the ones that we could authorize to sell, if I recall, maybe I think it's like a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
If you sell, if, if you're owed twenty-five, if we're owed twenty-five hundred dollars. And the property sells for fifty thousand dollars. And we get fifty thousand.
That's correct. The minimum bids are the. It's not just that delinquent year, in or, in order for someone to get it, they have to pay. The year that we foreclosed, but they gotta be all the way to current now, so they're gonna pay nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Because we're not gonna release it for one year and then have the following year it fall back into.
Right.
So they have to, they have to get caught up to be current. And that's the same for someone to redeem their property. Obviously, you get to decide this based on the policy, I'm just reiterating the way that it's written.
The six-figure, six, the six-figure. Approximation you just cited.
Yeah.
Is back taxes, not necessarily real estate value.
Correct, it's back taxes. Lien costs and interest.
You know, I, I, I'm familiar with the way that it's done in Augusta. If somebody's living on the property and it's falling. Into arrears, they don't sell the property out from under them.
That is a choice for you to make in this policy, the way it's written, I do have them being, being sold.
Being sold even if they're living there?
Yeah, you quit, claim, deem it to the next person and they can decide what to do with that person. They can let them rent it, stay there, they can fix them.
With much more.
But these are a case by case basis for you everyone. It's not an automatic process where I just go and do this. I have to bring every one of these to you and you can determine the circumstances of, of. Of that person that's living there or not living there or whatever, that's up to you five to decide.
Could you, when you, when you bring us these individual cases, could you make sure that we have that information available?
Yes, absolutely. It, it, it has that requirements in there that I bring you with sufficient information so that you can make it an educated decision about how to. Dispose of. For example, if it's a. If it's a junkyard or something like that, my recommendation would be, let's waive the lien. Because the, the, we don't want it, the property might be contaminated, we'll never get rid of it and we'll be stuck with the problem. So sometimes you, you may determine to do that too. So we. That makes sense.
That's vacant land, that's an easy.
Well, that's, that's right.
Or vacant land, the policy requires if it's, if it's vacant land, that I talk to the chair of the conservation commission so they can make a recommendation whether they want to keep it as open space or something like that, so that's also a choice too.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of. Dispossessing a poverty-stricken person. Leaving them homeless, I just don't like that prospect, and I think Augusta's policy is very humane. I think we should be guided by something like that.
The policy I base this one is. City of Bath, they used to do that same thing when I was there, but they've gotten away, because they had, you know, many accounts that were. Twenty, twenty years delinquent, and the property becomes, in such disrepair, that by the time the person. Passed away, it was actually a liability at that point, because there was, nobody wanted to cash in on the, because it was. It's, it's arrears was higher than the, the value of what was left, so. But this is certainly your choice. I'll bring the policy to you once I have the lawyer make sure that she agrees with all of the, all of the provisions in there and then. You guys can decide which paragraphs or sentences you wanna strike, change with them.
At one time, there was a property on the South Monmouth Road. That the farmer proposed. Spreading human, right, waste over it and, uh. Uh, the town decided to foreclose on that piece of property rather than to let that happen.
Yeah.
So. I guess we should be flexible.
That's it. Uh, oh, I was, I, I. I just wanted to say, we're starting the budget process, Mark is putting together our new templates, so I, so you know, it's, it's all gonna look quite a bit different this year just because of. The process, but we're starting it earlier. So that we can have a full package budget earlier in the process, so it's not just like the last. Two meetings in April where you have to make the decision. I'm hopeful that we can get you a final product with all of the costs involved earlier, so that, so you have more time to kind of reflect on what it's gonna do to the tax rate. What changes you might want to make holistically. I will be bringing that to you as soon as we get it. Mark's working, like I said, he's working on our templates to give out to the department heads, they can start plugging their numbers in. That's it.
So I saw some progress on the dam. Part of your. Update?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, did we hear back from, uh, we were, we, at our last meeting, we were gonna ask a question of the other solar proposal?
I didn't, I didn't hear back.
Escalator.
I didn't send it till Monday, but I didn't, I didn't hear back from him again, okay. If I hear something, I will. I will forward it to you. I did ask him that question about whether it's, you know, stuck to that or what, or what that. Escalator was, if there was one.
Have we heard anything on the, uh, North Monmouth Water Survey that we?
I haven't got an update in several weeks. From them, so I, I, I'm not sure where they are at this point. The sanitary district folks come, uh. The water district folks, they come by, uh, when they have an update, they come in and let me know, and I try to pass that along to people when they, when they stop by.
So, uh, then on the slide board reports? Um, we mentioned having Donna for the appraiser, um. Have an appearance here so we can figure out some of this crazy stuff, particularly when we are. Personal property. Can she at some point appear at?
I can ask her.
I think we also mentioned that along those lines at the last meeting, perhaps, uh. Cross referencing. Some of the economic development lists of businesses in town. Yeah. As a potential source of information for Donna.
I did ask, I did see Reagan and asked her about that. We're, uh, the, one of the things you sent us had to do with the paving. Starting, so. Right. And that's. You know about that?
Yeah, the, with the year that the contractor, every contractor had, but our contractor, we chose, you know, with. Labor shortages, um. A long dry stretch, but then a lot of rain. He just doesn't feel. This point with the temperatures that he can put down a product that's gonna be guaranteed at last. So it means paving for the second year in a row was delayed until the spring of the following year. Based on a couple of the roads we're gonna pave, that's gonna make for a long winter, a lot of pothole patching and. The same went through last winter, it's unfortunate, but. The end result will be a road that will last. Ten plus years without issue compared to maybe peeling up the following year because temperatures weren't right and it didn't adhere correctly, so. It's a. The right decision, it's just. Uh, an unfortunate decision.
Is he gonna hold the price in the same or what, what's gonna happen with that?
There's, there's escalator built into the contract, so, um. Price goes down, we benefit, it goes up, it's, it's scaled and it will be. Minimal. Um, the same thing happened last year. You know, when that paving was approved, there would, we didn't even have the. Issues that created, um, thankfully, the escalator was already in the bid, so. The difference was, was, was minimal, even though the increase was tremendous. So we're, we're protected.
And so we're talking about Sanborn Road, Blue Road, Compton Hall Parking Lot?
Compton Hall Parking Lot is a separate vendor, they have not. Said they won't do that yet.
Okay.
Where it's a parking lot. It's under. Different standards of, of adherence, uh, you know, it's not gonna be under the stress that the road would be, so. There's, I would say that slim to none, that it'll happen, but I don't have confirmation on that. But yeah, Sanborn, Blue. Upper section of Norris Hill from Blue to Academy. South Monmouth Road from Fish Hatchery to one twenty-six. And then that small section of Oak Hill Road. By the South Monmouth Rocket will all be delayed. Blue and Norris Hill are. Are bumpy, but they're not broken up. Um. Sanborn, South Monmouth and Oak Hill are broken up already, so we. We have a lot of patch on hand and I guarantee will be. In between storms will be out patching, patching breakups of pavement.
Are there any roads that, uh? That, that you're considering paving and paving will take place next. Year. Uh. That need to be striped because, just for safety reasons?
Yes, basically every road that was gonna be paved, I did not strike. Uh, so, so to not waste the money, so at this point, I will. I'll call the striper and I'll have those roads striped for the winter, just for visibility. So. It's unfortunate, but. To strike this late, but. You know, those roads, they need at least W O Is for safety. If anything to help guide the cloud in the middle of the night, trying to keep center of the road. But yeah, so I'll, I'll have them striped, uh, for the winter and. Uh, then there'll be, obviously, once the paving is complete, now it depends on spring, you know, could it be March, could it be May? Uh, they'll be striking.
Have you heard anything about the? The, uh. Those people who, uh. Wanted to have a way for. Uh, people using the transfer station can get, uh, waste wood, pre-waste wood that they're producing. Calls, who I think were the.
Yeah, that's, um. That, uh, fell through on their end, they. They found another, um. Interested party or way to take care of those wood clippings and they, they went to them and. Um. So I didn't have anything coming to the transfer station if. The opportunity presents itself again. Uh, from some other people or, or they call back with the next load, then, then I'll go forward with it at that point.
Is there any update on the audit? How that's working?
Yes, I mentioned last time that we're, we're scheduled for early December for our K O to come back.
Yeah, okay.
Mark, uh. Uh, thought that he could have. His portion ready for that date, so our K O will be here that week. Doesn't look like it's us anymore that's gonna be the issue, it's working, our K O, it's, it's them working us into their schedule at this point.
Oh. Anything on the Cotton Morgan Dam?
Um, not, other than I told the, um. The engineering company to move forward with the construction documents like you asked me to last, uh. Last time, he asked about what. What we thought the horizon was for construction, and, and I said, well, we don't currently have funding for it, so it, it, unless something changes, we're looking at a. You know, we're looking at an annual budget appropriation, so. It basically took that as okay, so we've got some time to. You know, to get the bid documents, so. As long as, I, I wouldn't expect to get much more from them until, you know, next, next year.
As long as the Band-Aid is holding.
Yeah.
The, the Band-Aid is holding, uh. The water is high right now due to all the rain.
Yeah, how full is Cotton Morgan?
It's set summer.
You should have left your dock in.
And now I could. That would say, and I, back in. The first time I'll, since the dam issue arose, it's that whole summer pond. And it's the exact opposite of what we need right now.
Want to take the copper dam out?
It's coming down through behind my house. I walked by there today and it's moving through there.
Yeah, yeah, the high water basically took out most of the copper dam, it's not damaged, it's just. It's overtopping it, um, and, and with the. Gate in the dam itself not actually holding back the water, it's draining quite nicely, so. Another couple of weeks, maybe by the end of November, hopefully it'll be down to, back to its winter level and. See what spring brings.
So this, all of this means that next summer will be another bad one for the. The lake, for the, the people who.
It, it has potential to. The, the, the nice thing is, is that we'll be on top of it, we know. What the problems are and we know the copper dam, the temporary copper dam can. Solve most of those problems, so. Um, you know, as soon as I get the okay in the spring from Cobbusy Water District. To, um. You know, to dam it back up per se, uh. My crew will reinstall the copper dam. And, and, because we've, we've been shown how to do it, so we'll reinstall it. And do our best to get it up to summer pond level, be able to maintain it. Until construction takes place, um. And I, then obviously that. Construction will determine the lake level at that point, what they need to do to have for a water level to work on the area. But the goal would be to, to bin the project out even before we have the funding and just make it, make the award contingent on town meeting approving. The project. That way we have the, the contractor in theory already lined up for us some, sometime when they're allowed to do it.
So it won't be too bad for the lake users and the lake residents?
Fingers crossed, fingers crossed. That we'll be able to. Looking at the copper dam in place, talking to Wendy Dennis at Cobbusy. I think we can. Realistically hold it within three inches of summer pond level. Um, with the copper dam in place and with us maintaining it. You know, um. Bi-weekly, semi-weekly, daily basis, whatever we have to do. The, the P W will do everything we can to keep it. As, as, as high as reasonable, um, until the construction takes over and dictates what has to happen.
So you, I have the question I had, if you wrote, uh, something about Mr. Lemay. You know, it's. I guess going to the Board of Appeals.
Yes.
Then that may lead to. Uh, going to court?
Maybe not the dock issue, but he's retained an attorney and, uh. He's gonna have a slug of other violations which are much more serious that he's not going to, I can imagine, be very. Impressed with. So I can, this, I was just trying to warn you, this could become an inexpensive enforcement action, because if we do get. You know, if he does follow through, we're gonna have to, you know. Lawyer up and, because he's got a lawyer and it, it just could get expensive. So just trying to warn you ahead of time.
But our attorneys will take care of this.
Yep.
It, it, there's a number of, it seems like what you said, that he's making issues, all kinds of. And things that, you know. Is in violation for.
Yes.
I mean, his wells on somebody else's.
Wells on the neighbor's property is. Or hang over the property line, retaining wall is. Too close to the property line, that's down. And the neighbor is. My understanding is not going to be accommodating. There's a lot of angry people down there.
It's like.
Yeah, and Dan Roy, every, everybody's been down there.
Any, anything else? Uh. And, uh, over comment?
You know, I'm a Philadelphia girl.
Good night for you last night.
Yes, tonight I believe the Eagles game is right. Well, the one starts at eight, you know, and starts at eight thirty. So anyway, I'm here. So anyway, I'm here for to discuss the Christmas tree. Holiday tree lighting and it will be the Saturday after Thanksgiving. On, um, I guess that's November twenty-sixth. Uh, we're still doing a lot of, you know, a lot of planning. Uh, we're, we are missing one thing at this point. But Doug assures me that that tree will be there that night, or I told him he could stand there and we're gonna light him. I knew nothing about it. It was a surprise to me when I saw it on Facebook. But it was, it was taken down legitimately by Dan and his crew with the approval of the museum. It was, it was a planned, it was a planned event. They just didn't tell me and I was already in the midst of making plans. So. Anyway, it is what it is. And we have some exciting things that we wanted to do this year. Uh, last year we figured we had about a hundred fifty people and that was a lot. We're hoping and figuring that this year we might even have more. So I'm going to talk a little bit and we can, I'm going to be quick. Uh, we can talk about what I'm going to request here. Um, the museum's taking an, an actual larger part in the event than they have in the past. They are going to be opening the country store and putting in, and some of you people that have been around for a while might notice. But they have a lot of old sleds. Uh, they've got quite a collection and they're going to bring them all out and put them in there. So that night people will be able to, you know, go in there in the country store and, and see all this. And of course Emily's store will be open. And the country store will be open. Um, we're going to bring one of the sleighs. The big sleighs out and have that on the lawn. It's going to be better lit than it's been in the past years. So that whole area will be lit. That big sleigh will be out there. Santa will be in there. People can get their pictures taken. I've contacted, uh, several, uh, musical kind of groups even. Um, you know, to step up our act here. So we'll have more activity that will just be down there in that area. I've also asked Dan who said they would be tentatively would be doing the cocoa and all, but. I threw a curve at him last night and I'll have to ask the group tomorrow, his group tomorrow. If they would be willing to do the cookies and the cocoa down to the actual, um, carriage house to open the front of that up. And then people could go in there and have their, uh, hot cocoa and the cookies there. So that way we'd have everything in, in the one area. So if we ended up with two hundred, two hundred fifty people, we wouldn't have the problems that we did from the problems we did last year. Now, this is where I come, I want to ask you guys, would there be any way? That you'd consider, consider having that road closed for just an hour and a half that night? Not a long period of time and, um, I don't know what the process is for.
It's a form that has to be filled out correct with. For the Apple Fest.
Yeah.
Mema or something like.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to, um, do a little research. Cause it's the people who run the Apple Fest that actually fill the formal and we just give the approval through D O T to do it.
Okay, uh, I do know that somebody did, though I taught, the museum told me somebody did fill it out. He was actually one of the masons. Like he filled it out.
Okay, that'd be the same guy that runs the Apple Fest then.
So yes, so, so I need to get ahold of him?
Yep.
Okay. I, I can.
You know, Scotty.
Scott, yes.
Yeah, that's, it was Scott. Yeah. Okay. And, um, there's believed to be a lot of stuff put out on, on Facebook. And one thing, uh, Audrey Walker at the museum has already done is she, she took a picture. She's found a picture of the tree. Eight years ago, ten years ago, when it was just a little tight. And then a picture of it maybe last year. So that people can see, you know, trees grow and this is what happens. My understanding from one of the members, especially that's there, that's what she's been raised.
Yeah.
And been around forever. She remembers the Christmas tree lighting in town sixty years ago when she was younger. I mean, it's, it's in the, it's not a big history here in town. It's just kinda not lost for a few years. And now we've been trying to, trying to bring it, trying to bring it back. But history is that it used to be that tree was always a cut tree. There was always a cut tree brought and put on that proper.
Yeah.
So that this year, that's what's going to happen is we are going to have a, you know, we are going to have a cut tree, just like they used to. You know, I got mixed feelings about that, but that's all right. We're going to have a tree. That's the big thing. So any questions?
What time?
You know, we're, we're kind of claiming that because when we first started it, when I came up with this years ago, it was like seven o'clock or something was too late. So then I think we moved it to six o'clock. Last year, last year. And now there's the museum's talking, they'd like to see it four, four thirty, five o'clock. Just because maybe more of an incentive for families to bring, to bring their kids out. Is that too early, you think? I'm not one for change, so I.
Fall back, don't we, this weekend?
This weekend.
Yeah.
Is that good or bad? That's what the thinking was. And would it be better for people to have dinner and then bring the kids or bring the kids? And do this and then go home and have dinner.
New York did it early. New York did it early. Pardon me? New York did it early and then you went home and ended it. So.
Really? Yeah.
It's dark.
It's dark at four thirty.
Just call me, let me know if Scott made, made up with paperwork. Cause I, I mean, we'll, we'll do the same thing.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's not much, but it's not much time, but it's just.
Close down one lane, keep one lane open and just.
Except we're running out of activities on both sides of the river. That's.
Is it, is it easier to staff that if it's early? Doesn't matter. Okay.
It's a visibility thing, that's all.
Yeah, and we're, we should have some good light, some good lighting, you know, of the areas. So that was two.
I just want to make sure you're aware, um, Public Works, one of the employees donated a, a very large, heavy metal, uh, tree stand. And I'll have to measure how big of a tree trunk it'll take. I believe it's eight or ten inch. Um, if you wanted that to help set the tree.
Okay, let, let me just stop you right there.
Sure.
The plan is Doug's getting the tree and you're putting it up. Doug, you can get together. I told him that was not my responsibility. The tree was there. That's what I was working with. You take the tree away, you're on your own.
Okay, fair enough. We'll take care of it.
So this is Saturday, the twenty-sixth?
The twenty-sixth.
Okay.
I was hoping that Public Works, I mean, I, I'd like to pick out the tree or whatever, or, you know, ask them. Um, at Frederickson's to. Give me a tree, but then you guys are gonna have to haul it.
Don't you have a pickup truck?
Not a big one.
Frederickson is cut your own, so.
But you're picking it out, cause I don't want to hear about an out of place brand.
We appreciate it every year. We, Public Works, and you took the tree down. And, uh, you were nice to do that. You did a beautiful job. You really did.
Oh, that's not the.
Yes, thank you.
They did a nice job.
All right, so.
So a man that's a tree's gone, but it's gone. There's nothing we can do now.
We'll make sure it's, we'll make sure it's secure and, and, uh, there and available.
Alrighty, well, I'm out of here for a little much, Mike.
Thank you. Yeah, good luck. Thank you. Any other public comments? Next is to consider updating the job of Monmouth employee handbook.
So I talked to, I talked to Christie Gould to get at your point. She's the director of the health trust. Some of, some of my information was out of date. So this is, it's a, a lot of this changed with the Affordable Care. I dealt with this before. So I was repeating something that wasn't true because it's changed since that passed. The shocker. Um, so. There, there, the only issue is, is that there, the, the earliest that you can start insurance is the first of the month after you start. Um, Anthem will not, will not insure anybody until the first of the month after you start when the payments are. We currently have a, we, we at some point told MMA that we wanted a thirty day uh, waiting period on insuring people. So if they were to start here, say on the fifteenth of the month, it would be thirty days, it'd be fifteen for the next month and then the fifteen, you know, and then to get to the first. So it would effectively be forty-five under that scenario. All I have to do to back it up to be the first of the month after they start is, is, is to literally call MMA and say, we want to have it start on the, on the first of, we just want to get rid of the thirty day waiting period. So. Um, insurance typically starts on the first day of the month afterwards, because if you come from another employer, they typically insure you to the end of the month you left. So there's no gap. So I can do that.
Can we, can we put that in the employee handbook as part of, as the policy or?
Certainly, if you want it in there. It, it, it literally is as simple as me sending Christie an email and saying, we want to get rid of the thirty day. For new hires, it won't, it won't.
Sounds to me like that sounds like a problem.
Okay.
The loophole's closed. Yes, no, no.
I, I have a couple of issues with some stuff in the laying handbook. We never should have given her that. It's on page twelve. I don't know if you also have a copy of it, but on page twelve, okay, underneath where it says payroll administration. The very first sentence says. Thanks. See you Friday.
No backup.
Acs are issued bi-weekly on Thursday, which is the change. And then it says for full-time employees, period. What about the rest of us? Thank you very much.
It's old language. Anything that's not green, so.
None intended, and, uh, thank you for fixing that.
Then, what I really have the issue with is then down at the bottom, where it says now, all employees are required to enroll in direct deposit. Direct deposit is the electronic deposit of, I can't read it because it's highlighted. As a form of payment and it's safe, confidential and convenient. I really have issue with it. I personally we, but it's I don't really. I don't use electronic. I don't use the debt thing. We're the ones that use cash. We're gonna have issues with the transfer station. It's our, it's our Friday thing. We go to the bank, the bank. It, my feeling on the bank is it's like going to the big box store. If you always go to the self-service thing, then you, you're gonna be doing it all the time. There's gonna be nobody there to help you. It, it's, it's, it has saved us more times than I can tell you, just on stupid things. You walk in, it's like, oh, yes. Yes, I forgot to give you your hundred dollars cash and, you know, she knew it. She didn't have to ask them for I D or anything like that. So I really kind of have issue with it. Uh, you know, I know I'm one of the few that absolutely am walking about this. I think I'm one of two employees of the whole town that now do not want to do direct deposit. But I'm just kind of putting out it, putting it out there that I kind of object to that.
And the first change, the first line says H X will be issued. You have to change that then. You're not issuing with H X anymore.
It's a very term and you're still getting a stub that shows a blank.
Your pay will be.
Yes.
Oh, it's semantics really.
But if you say paycheck, I want a paycheck.
So, um.
You're, you're too young to worry about it, but once you get on social. You're gonna have to have a direct deposit.
And I fight with them every, every.
Good luck.
And I win.
They send you a check?
Yes, they do.
Um.
They have.
But, um, 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 so. Do, how, what's going on now? Is everybody on direct deposit or are you issuing some, something?
Or maybe, maybe one other person, like she said.
So then just obviously change that to, you know, direct deposit here.
Well, we can certainly make exceptions. I mean, I'm allowed to pretty much do anything I want under this policy. It says it in the back that Lori and I to make exceptions for things based on, you know, uh. The issue is, is that now that our payroll is, is done out of house, when they put these things in the mail on Thursday or Friday morning or whenever it, it actually gets processed. We, we, we had this with an individual at the, at the transfer station. When there's a Monday holiday, oftentimes the person isn't going to get their check till the Tuesday, the Wednesday of, of the following week. So they're setting kind of themselves up to have to wait. And certain employees may not be able to wait that amount of time, like the one that we had to deal with was desperate. And then it, it, it forces me to write a handwritten check and then have that person cancel the check. And it's just, it's an administrative hassle is what it is to have one or two of these things have to get dropped in the mail. But it's, it certainly can be done. It's not the end of the world. You just have to, you just have to understand that if it, it's in the postal service and you know how that's all slow and all that, you just have to know that.
And I don't.
That's really the.
But I don't have to have it on, on Thursday or.
Right, or for, yeah, whatever.
Friday, whatever it is.
Yeah, which I understand that you're.
Like, I think I saw the checks two, two weeks ago, but you don't tell.
We just have other employees that I, I'm trying to avoid that problem.
So would you be okay leaving the language as is with the understanding that we've, that, that we authorize the town manager make exceptions and?
Okay.
Object, you know, my opinion. I'm, I'm not entitled to do that. Everybody else is. I am too. That's fine. And if that, that works, that's absolutely mine.
Okay.
It's a, it's not work. If it doesn't work, it's not the end of the world either.
Yes.
He said that he's willing to do it. He just wants everybody to understand that they.
Don't make a present.
That they have other towns where there, where, where when there's holidays and things, the checks are very late. And, and it can hurt people that don't make a lot.
Aren't anticipating. And then if it's changed, and if there's changes being made to the employee handbook, the, the other thing that I just kind of had a question about on page fifteen where you list the, the holidays, so of what it is, and you added now, uh, uh, nineteenth and the half day after Christmas Eve. The, the only thing that's kind of not in there explaining anything is when there's a Friday holiday. Because, because the Friday, the town office is closed. So then that makes on the Thursday. So it's just, it's just really the explanation of then, then what you're, you're doing with it. Like, and the, the Friday half day, I'm assuming this year, that the town office now is taking a, a floating half day. The girls. Or something. I mean, I'm, I'm just. You know.
It's not explicit. You're right. We've kind of, we've kind of followed the, the, the same rationale that you would for if it was on a Saturday or Sunday. We put it to the closest day.
Right.
So with, with Christmas being on Monday. Sunday, so that day would be Monday. And because the town office isn't open on Fridays, that half a day will be Thursday afternoon. It'll be a half day Thursday, cause that's the closest day to that day. Does that make sense?
Right, yeah. I mean, I get it. And I mean, I mean, the, the chief is, you, you know, he basically says to me, you know, what'll work for you, when he knows I'll come in if I need him and whatever. But I'm, you know, I'm just thinking if you're changing wording on here. If, if down the road, it just makes it easier for people to look at and go, this is what the, the policy is and this is what, what we should be thinking about of what's happened. And I only wrote down one other thing. So you don't think I'm a real pain in the neck. On page twenty-eight, underneath where it says bulletin boards. At least one bulletin board will be established with easy accents, access to each department for the purpose of advertising open job positions. Town notices, department procedures, state and federal notices, safety information, et cetera. But we've had a bulletin board for, I don't know how many years. And yes, it's been posted. However, we have not gotten any job openings within the town in I don't know how long to post on these bulletin boards. Not that I'm looking to move anyplace else. I'm quite happy where I am. But just kind of, I'm just kind of saying, we're, we're not getting the information.
Okay.
We have gotten safety stuff. But we really have not gotten any other information.
If you, I was just thinking, if you're looking for an upgrade, I think the transfer station is hiring.
I mean, I'm, sometimes people, you know, even if we're not looking, they, they know somebody that is. Sometimes people, you know, even if we're not looking, they, they know somebody that is, but if they don't know about it, it's like, you know, like I just found out the town office hired somebody for, for hours a day or whatever. Who knew? You know, I, there's people I know that I couldn't send something to.
Post, we post our jobs on MMA and, and they're on the town one site. A new job employee, but, but I hear what you're saying. Yeah.
Thank you.
Another task for the HR manager.
Yes.
I really like working for the South Carolina Rides.
So that's all done. Uh, next is to consider a catering, catering application.
It's really your policy, so yes, if you could. If you could approve it.
As amended. I'll make a motion that we, um, consider that we approve updating the uh, town of Monmouth employee handbook with changes as noted.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion by Chris, seconded by Kent to amend the employee handbook as noted. All those favor. Thank you. Next is the, to consider a catering, catering application for Cubs and all.
This is the one you already approved, but I need a, I need a public vote. This was for the awards party last weekend.
One this weekend?
I mean, it, it's next one's in December, it'll be on your next.
Do we need a public vote for Kushna?
Yes.
I make a motion, we approve the catering application for Kushna.
Thank you. Excuse me, I couldn't remember what the name of the catering company was, something for the.
What's that? Motion by Kent, seconded by, uh, to approve the catering permit for Kushna. All those in favor. Uh, next is to consider appointing William Mann, the Board of Appeals.
I make a motion, we appoint, uh, Bill Mann to the Board of Appeals.
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Kent, seconded by Chris to point William Mann for the Board of Appeals, all those in favor. Next is warrant number nine, or twenty, twenty, twenty-three.
Twenty, twenty-three?
It is, it's fiscal year twenty.
Oh, fiscal, oh.
Fiscal year twenty-three is the. Yes, I'm trying, I, I could have put, I'll put twenty-two, twenty-three next. Andrew Scoggan Bank, this is debt service, I believe on fire trailer. Twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport, two thousand, five hundred and sixty-four. NSK Berch, uh, fuel, eight, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Buildings propane, heating fuel, one thousand, one hundred and thirteen. Fleet Truck and Refrigeration Services, equipment maintenance and vehicle repairs, twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Frost and Suns, uh, is it Salt? What you're saying, sorry, twenty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six. Dales LLC, this is, um, equipment for the police department, one thousand and seventy-eight dollars. Criminal Industries Demo, Transfer Station, nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight. LP Poreer and Sons, no relation to me. North Main and People's Street Sidewalk, sixty-two thousand and eighty-two. Uh, Main Technology Group, this is, all, these are a few months of bills and some other stuff. They, they have electronic billing system sometimes. Five thousand, one hundred and eighty-three. Main Ways to Energy tipping fees, two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine. Mission Square, these are retirement contribution payments, three thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight. England Salt Company, there we go, this is salt, right?
That's the sense of salt.
Sixteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine. Saint Laurent and Sons, Cressy Road Rebuild Project, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and twelve. Euro, Euro Motor Vehicles, twenty-three thousand, eighty-five. Uh, United Construction and Forestry Vehicle Maintenance, five thousand and Viking Size, Main Vehicle Repairs, I mean, it's thousand bucks.
I make a motion to approve fiscal year twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll second that.
So there's a motion by Kent, seconded by Chris, move warrant number nine. For fiscal year twenty-three, all those in favor. Thank you.
Hey, speaking of, uh, financials and before we adjourn, um, we were talking in our last meeting about getting financial summaries or at least year to date, June, June to date types of, uh, snapshot.
Yeah, you had mentioned quarterly, so I was planning on bringing it up to you in December.
Okay.
That would be your first, we're kind of in that quarter now, so then it'll be like your half year. If you want one sooner than that, I can do that. But that's, that was how it, that's how I thought of it.
The end of December or the beginning of December?
It would be the end of December.
Is it possible we could just see the first quarter at the next meeting?
Department heads getting their mail.
Yes, they should get one tomorrow, when, when the warrant goes through tomorrow, now that it's, when it gets approved, they you're supposed to be fitting them out on a Thursday after your meeting.
And also I noted that, uh, we had a two thousand dollar, two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollar expenditure to main waste uh, in the last warrant that we just approved, uh, that was tipping fees you identified. Is that like a month's worth, a week's worth? What is that?
Was it twenty thousand or two?
Was it twenty?
I think it was twenty last month because we had the bills were going somewhere not where they were supposed to, so they called up one day and said, you can't send anything down here unless you, so sent Dan down there with a check. So I think it was, that was like three months.
At least three months.
Three months, something like that.
Cause, cause I just got a bill emailed to me today and it's shy of five thousand.
Right, that's just, that's just your, your trash canning now.
So five thousand is kind of our typical tipping fee.
Probably more in the summer when there's more people here, I would, I would suspect.
Give, give or take, I, I can actually.
Oh, it'll come up in the, I, I'm, I'm assuming it would come up in the quarterly summary that you'd be able to.
Oh yeah, you'll be able to see all the line items that we'll have.
You'll, you'll see.
Where everything is and there's a percentage at the end that shows you whether we're running over or not.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Well, before we do that, can someone explain to me what this MPCMA?
That's the Maine Town, City, County Managers Association. It's, it's my professional organization.
And what do they want?
I think that they're sending out a letter reminding boards that your town manager should not be engaged in political activity of any kind or supporting candidates on their own board. There was recently a municipal manager that was expelled from our association because he was actively participating in politics within his own community and that's strictly forbidden under our code of ethics. I think they were just trying to remind all elected officials that we shouldn't be involved in that and don't, don't ask, don't put us in the position where we're campaigning for you or anything. I, I think that's the point.
Town office open for regular business on election day?
Yes. Yeah.
I know we get asked sometimes that on the polls.
Are you getting a lot of people coming in to vote early?
I think we've, we've processed six hundred absentee ballot requests so far, which I think puts us ahead of the twenty-twenty.
Ahead of twenty-twenty?
Yeah.
Did you?
No, yeah.
Okay, I, I just don't want it on.
Anybody else? Did anybody make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second. I thought there was a motion, but I didn't see that.